I'm going to open to a public hearing. We have, with approval or disapproval, that the following variance applications will be heard for the second public hearing for 1512 Dry Valley Road, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, Tax Partial 0-087-085, Request for Conditional Use variance to continue to operate a salvage yard, Planning Commission Recommendation, Approval on September the 21st, 2017, with the following conditions: Within 60 days, everything will be moved 300 feet back at the curve of, on Ridgeland Road. All salvage must be moved behind the house and a fence and evergreen trees planted around it. The survey will be done to ensure nothing is on anyone else's property. So, do we have any comments from the Planning Commission or staff?
These folks have been running a business there for quite a few years, and anyway, it came up that the salvage yard kept getting scattered feather and feather out, and so they came to ask for a conditional use variance for the property, and with that, we designated that the area would have to be cleaned up, and what this does is it actually puts all of their salvage yard basically out of sight to the public. So, the neighbors, we did have some neighbors at the meeting that was concerned, and under the conditions that we did, everybody seemed to be happy, you know, with the situation. So, we recommend that it to be done.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak against us granting this variance? Is anyone in opposition of the variance? Okay, here it is done. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of the variance, or had any additional comments about this?
Should I?
You'd like to?
We're the owners of the property. My husband has run this salvage yard for about 41 years. We've lived there. That's been his only income, all of our married life. We went to court on this about 12 years ago, and we thought this was over with and done. They didn't give us any stipulation. Like I said, we're gonna do whatever they ask us to do, to clean it up and meet the guidelines to make everybody happy. But like I said, he's been cleaning up, we've got junk and tickets, I've got income tax records where we've listed his, you know, taxes every year as a salvage owner. So, but like I said, we'll do whatever it takes to meet the guidelines that, you know, that we need to.
Okay. All right, is there anything else to be added to this? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make the decision to go with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and go ahead and approve this with the conditions, and we also have a one-page form here. Has this been shown to the property owners?
Yes.
So, they have reviewed this, but this basically is just a statement outlining the agreement of the 60 days and planting of the trees and everything. So, this just gets us a document for the record to show that they're in agreement with that. So, we'll go ahead and sign this. And I'll go ahead and sign this. In the next meeting, though, if y'all will get with the clerk, she'll have to sign this and make you a copy as well. Okay, now, we're gonna move back into our regular meeting on the second page of our agenda. We do have one order of business here for public. We're gonna removal of the former trustees on the Lincoln Retirement and add new trustees. The Lincoln Financial Group actually is the company for several years that has managed the investments of the defined pension plan for the more senior staff of employees that have been here for many years. The defined pension fund was sunset several years ago, but there's still roughly, I think, about 100 employees, give or take, that's still in that fund, and so to be in compliance with any changes to those plans, or most importantly, if anyone needs to draw funds out of their retirement, if they've taken retirement, or they've left employment of Walker County and want to cash out those funds, it has to be signed off by one of the trustees. And so, we've had a handful of people that have stepped forward that want to just get their retirement, and so we've had the actuary or figure that. There's not any bonuses, or additional compensation, or credits for additional years of service, or anything like that that's taken place some in the past. This is just straight up what these folks are entitled to, and so one of the things they made us aware of is that we had never updated the trustees, and there were no one listed as a trustee that are still here anymore. And so, this is a letter to give them notification that we brought this before the public meeting, and we are updating the trustees. So, this letter is made out to Lincoln Financial Group. This is for the removal of the current trustee, BB Haskell, and Floyd Johnson from the Lincoln Financial Plan. At this time, I am appointing probate Judge Christie J. Anderson, Walker County CFO, Greg Reed H. McConnell, and I, Walker County Sole Commissioner Shannicade Whitfield, as trustees to the Walker County Government Defined Benefit Plan. Lincoln Financial Contract 78164 with assets managed through Lincoln Financial Contract 78164. Please be advised that effective January 1, 2017, I was elected Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, as Sole Commissioner with the full authority to sign and to delegate additional county officials to sign any necessary Lincoln Financial Group documents regarding Contract 78164. The former trustee, BB Haskell, and Floyd Johnson are no longer employed by Walker County Government. They were the only two that were listed on that from the documents we've got. We also were able to find in the file a letter of resignation from Floyd Johnson dated November 21st of 2016. She thought that she had been off the trustee since 2011. So, just for the record, so everybody knows that we didn't force her out, and that she's no longer employed here, she's retired. So, we just provided that for information. So, I'm gonna go ahead and sign this letter, so we can submit this, and then the former employees that are waiting for their distributions, they will be able to get those processed quickly and get those funds too. Any questions about that? Oh, that's a little bit unusual. Anybody got any questions on that one? Okay, Signature of the Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant Program. This is a grant that was awarded back a couple of months ago, back in June 13th. This is a judicial, a juvenile justice grant that we've been receiving the last several years.
Four years, I believe.
Probably four years, in the amount of $105,000. This is 100% grant. We just are the administrators of managing those funds and making sure everything's in compliance with the documentation and the reporting, and then we submit those claims, and they reimburse us for that activity. So, there was some additional documents that needed to be signed by me, and we wanted to make sure everyone was aware of this, so we're gonna sign these in public, and that way y'all have copies of this as well. But this is pretty standard procedure. Okay. All right. Okay, the next item here, we have a resolution of continuance of our budget. We've been working very diligently with the staff, the department heads, and the elected officials to try to get us a balanced budget and a realistic budget, which from what I'm gathering from most staff members, it's been a while since that's been the case. And so, we have spent many, many days and hours working on this. Been committed to meet with each of the elected officials, constitutional officers, to sit down and look at their history of their past expenditures, look at their budget request for 2018, and also sit down with them and go through line by line of everything on their budget. So, just as one example, I did that yesterday with Carolyn Walker, our Tax Commissioner. Took three hours to do that one department, and we jointly come to an agreement and reduced her budget based off of her request by over $221,000 in that one meeting. So, it's a very tedious, time-consuming process to get this right. So, we will have this finished up by next week, and you'll be able to see all 100-plus pages of that, and look at the history, and be able to see a line-by-line detail. But we would rather get it right than rush through it and throw out something that's not correct, and try to get everything where it's realistic, so that each department, each elected official will have a budget that meets their needs and takes care of what their departments need to operate and function and be a viable entity in our community, but most importantly, that it's a budget that is balanced. So, this resolution here is to provide for a continuing payment of emergency expenditures in 2017 annual budget, whereas the Sole Commissioner of Walker County is the county governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, whereas the current 2017 annual budget was adopted for physical year beginning October 1, 2016, and ending September 30th of 2017, whereas the Sole Commissioner and County Financial Officer have prepared and submitted to the Commissioner's Office a proposed 2018 annual budget, and placed copies of the budget in the Commissioner's Office for review by county's residents, whereas noting were published on August 9th and 16th of 2017 in Walker County Messenger, a legal organ, the Walker County, that the proposed property tax increase and budget were available for review at the public hearing. On the proposed property tax increase and budget would be held on August 24th of 2017, whereas public hearings were held on August 17th, 19th, 22nd, 23rd, and 24th of 2017 to receive public comment and proposed property tax increase and budget pursuant to OCG 36-81-5, whereas the Sole Commissioner of Walker County is continuing to work with county government staff, departments, and constitutional officers to further reduce anticipated expenditures for the, it should be 2018 physical year. Sorry, there's a typo there. Correct that there. Whereas such 2018 fiscal year budget will be prepared for final approval at the regular commission meeting set forth on Thursday, October 5th, 2017. Therefore, it be resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County that pending such approval, again, it should be 2018, fiscal year budget, only those emergency expenditures as needed to maintain essential county functions shall be paid by the county, and such expenditure shall be included in the 2018 budget. So, resolved and adopted the 28th day of September, 2017. Anybody have any questions on this, comments? We could've just kept going and not said anything about this, but I wanted to do this and bring it public, that we're acknowledging that we have to operate by balanced budget. We will have a balanced budget, but we're gonna be about five days past the start of our physical year, being October 1. We'll have this done by October 5. Okay, last month meeting, we opened the bids and had four bid proposals for the grinding of the brush and wood for the Walker County landfill to chip that material up so it can be recycled and used as a fuel source by customer. So, Payne Gilli is our manager of our landfill sanitation operations, so Payne, I know you've done analysis there, so what's your recommendations and give us an overview?
Okay, as far as the overview goes, we have a brush pile at the landfill where we accept trees and brush from Walker County, from the road department, from the Georgia Department of Transportation, surrounding counties, and the public. And we grind this material and sell the mulch to the public, but also to a facility in North Alabama where they burn it and use for fuel. And we, this contract used to be a month-to-month contract, and the county paid a certain fee every month, and whether the company bid any grinding or not. So, the new administration wanted to change that around, and we solicited bids, and this is kind of what we came up with. We had five bidders. Is there anybody in the room that's from any of the companies? Okay, well, we had Stewart's Grinding out of Cartersville, Georgia, Udelwall Clearing and Grinding out of Appleson, Tennessee, Big Woody's Tree Service out of Appleson, and Tally Construction out of Rossville. And the bids, the bids were broken down into the type of equipment offered, support equipment and support personnel. Some of the grinding rate ranged from $300 to $600 an hour. And when you add up, you know, the support equipment and operators, that's gonna increase the hourly rate. But most things were based on a 10-hour day. I've talked with all of the bidders. They answered the same questions, and basically, everybody would work about a 10-hour day. And the costs range from $4,000 to $9,220 a day. And we looked at, you know, the estimated timeframe, and most firms were, you know, within, you know, five to 10 days of doing this work. But really, it kind of boils back down to the type of equipment that they're gonna offer, the support equipment and the support personnel. And looking through all that, and taking all that into consideration, and the timeframe that we have, along with the amount of space that we have, and the brush pile that we have, and the type of grinder that these companies were going to bring in. Some of these machines are as large as these two rooms here of the building. Yeah, they're pretty good size, and they can grind, you know, one to two, three tons an hour. And some will grind as fast as you can feed them. And, you know, based on all of that, when you look at that as a complete, as a package, I'm recommending that we go with Big Woody's out of Appleson, Tennessee, just because of the type of equipment they have, the variety of support equipment they're going to bring with them, and the number of personnel that they're gonna bring with them. Now, we offered this bid under two scenarios. One, they supply everything. Two, they supply a few things, and we provide support equipment. We provide fuel and that sort of thing. And it just, just with the cost breakdown, it's really best if they handle it, and they come in and do the work themselves with their own equipment. We're there to help, of course, support in any way we can. But for the most part, this is probably the most complete package for us, given the size of the pile that we have and the space that we have to work.
Payne, I know you've spent a lot of time reviewing that, putting it all on spreadsheet, comparing the data, the number of employees, the type of equipment, and you and I have sat down and reviewed that and went through the financial details of that. So, we both agreed that it looks like Big Woody's can probably get that done in a week and get that knocked out, where some of the others, we're thinking it may take them as much as 10-plus days to get that done. So, when you look at the total cost per day, some, cost per day was less, but it was gonna take them more days because they had smaller equipment, less people, and it was gonna escalate the cost greater than getting someone in here that has the proper equipment to knock it out. So, I'll accept your recommendation for Big Woody's, and we'll let them get started as soon as possible and sign a purchase order to get them going. All right, thank you. Any questions on that or comments?
What do, where do you get out of the mulch?
How much the load's bringing?
Well, what we'll do is we'll load this on our tractor trailer and haul it to Alabama, and we're giving them anywhere from 20 to 24 tons, and that brings us about $500 a load. We ship one load per week, given the volume that we have out there. You know, I hope to up that, and they're receptive to taking two loads. I think that we can get, we can get two loads and make anywhere from $800 to $1,000 a week.
So, it's $20 a ton, roughly, we're giving for it. What does it cost us? Do we have it grounded?
Well, that's to be determined, how quick they can grind it, because they're giving us on a per-day basis. So, once we get it grounded and we get that done, we'll be able to break that cost down per day and know exactly that pile, what it costs us.
It's been November since they have grounded that thing, so we have substantial amount of work.
This should reduce our costs, because as you mentioned before, the prior agreement was they had a large grinder there, and they paid a flat fee if it was used or not. And it was many months that it wasn't used at all, and the county paid the bill as if it was being used. And so, it was a very inefficient way to do it. So, we feel like this way, stockpiling it probably about twice a year to be able to go in and do the grinding and get a crew to come in with bigger equipment and do it all at one time much faster, that it will greatly reduce our cost, which would give us more margin on the finished product. Plus, it's a big part of our recycling program that we have to do by the state requirements. They have to have a formalized recycling program. So, and it also keeps all this out of our landfill. So, we can grind it up, chip it, and send it to a company that uses it as a fuel, so they completely bring it down, I guess, to ash, whatever, you know, whatever won't burn. So, it's a win-win for the citizens, and for the county, and for the company that's using it as a fuel source for their costs. So, it's a win all the way around.
And we can't just get any kind of wood chipper to do this. This material has to pass a three-inch screen.
Yes, we have to get it down to a three-inch sized chip. So, when the road department has big trees fall on the side of the road, which is every week, unfortunately, you know, they're bringing in great big stumps and logs and stuff, and they'll be able to throw those things in there mostly whole and grind them up very quickly. So, it'll be a pretty impressive operation. We hope to get Joe out there and get some video of that when they get that started.
And I want to say thank you for choosing to go with having the people, the grinder people, do the whole shebang, because it would be wear and tear on our equipment and take our people from their jobs to do this work. And if there's a breakdown with our equipment, that's gonna set things back. And if it's on them, they're gonna come prepared to do a job, so they're not gonna want to have a breakdown.
Oh, I wasn't asking for us to do it. I was just thinking maybe what if we just give it to the company, let them grind it?
No, we need it.
So, we need some of it?
Yeah, we need it.
Well, and two, it's not necessarily ground material that you would want to probably put necessarily on your flower beds, I would think, because it's gonna be a hodgepodge of all different types of woods.
Right, yeah.
It's gonna have a lot of other debris.
A lot of these firms too, have, in the past, they had their own operation where they ground the material, and they do the same thing with it that we're doing, to take it to either Alabama or to Rome and sell it as a fuel, as a fuel source. And those contracts are really hard to get, so we're really lucky to have, you know, access to that type of disposal method, because it brings the county revenue at the same time.
Yeah, I actually have somewhere to take it. If it's willing to take it all and then some, you know, so being able to get rid of it, it's a big deal too. Very good. Okay, next item on the agenda, number five, is our proclamation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month of Walker County, whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to the children and to the elderly. Whereas, the problem of domestic violence are not confirmed to any group or groups of people, but across all economic, racial, and social barriers, and is supported by social material indifference, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, humanity, and due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economical control and/or abuse, and whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting women and children, and society as a whole, and whereas it is a battered woman themself who have been in the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equity to the home, equality to the home, whereas the goal of the community is to support efforts to educate the public about issues of family violence. And now, therefore, that the Walker County Commissioner does hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by the Family Crisis Center of Walker, DeCatoosa, and Jeterucha Counties, Inc., to work toward the elimination of personnel and institutional violence against women. So, that's a mouthful. So, we have a group here tonight from the Family Crisis Center of Walker, DeCatoosa, Jeterucha County. So, any of y'all, or all of y'all have anything you would like to add or say?
Um, it's, October is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we serve, each year we serve over 230 women and children in our shelter that stay an average of 90 days, not longer, just depending on our situation. And we have served over 700 victims in our outreach offices. And so, any support that any other community, community can give us, the Family Crisis Center will greatly appreciate it.
So, y'all pretty much, I know a lot of times stay pretty much at capacity, so y'all were able to house comfortably?
We can house up to 24 women and children at the shelter. We are the only shelter, only domestic violence shelter in our four county area. There's four, 36 state certified shelters in Georgia, and we are the only one in our four counties.
So, this is a great resource right here in Walker County, and y'all do a great service and ministry to people that's been in abusive situations. So, we did want to bring awareness to this tonight, and if y'all will stay at the end, we'll get a picture and make sure that the paper gets that, and make sure that everyone is aware, that we get the word out on our Facebook, that we want to bring attention to this from the commissioner level to make this October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you all for being here. Okay, we have our statistical data report for 2017. We've been producing this report for several months now, and then we are listing the most, two recent months, and we roll off a month each time, and then we show July and August 2017, and then the right two columns, we show year-to-date of 2017. So, the 2017 column is just year-to-date, but the actual far right column of 2016 is the actual for the entire year. So, there's some data that was not available to us from 2016, and some things that were not being done. So, we are very limited on the 2016 data. Want to bring your attention to the number of closed cases from our code enforcements. They've done an outstanding job. In July, they closed 87 cases, 70 in August, for a total this year, since we've been tracking that for the last four months. We just have data for four months, but they've closed 369 cases in four months' time period. So, what that means to you is that you've had 369 property owners that had violations, had at least one violation or more of some code fraction where their property did not meet compliance with the Walker County codes. And so, these are people that have stepped up and, you know, admitted and wanted to come into compliance and have worked with the code officials to... in compliance and have, uh, worked with the code officials to get in compliance. Many of those are given at least 30 days to get into compliance without facing any penalty or fines or fees. Uh, so, we try to work with all citizens to make sure they have amicable time. Uh, we do run into some cases of people that are just not physically able, so there are some ministry groups that we can put them in, nonprofit volunteer groups that we can put them with. So, I think it speaks volume in just a short period of time that, it was 369. And right above that, you'll see, there was 1,123 for the year of violations and there was 2,010 in compliance. And so, they're going in zones, street to street, partial by partial, and checking out. So, we are documenting and logging and taking pictures of the ones that are in compliance. Total responses for August is 369 and 305 of those were done by our quick response vehicles. So, we have, uh, 1,575 that were answered by the quick response vehicle this year. Also, October 1, uh, 2017, at 7:00 AM, we will be expanding into our additional two stations for our full-time fire staff using existing staff and a reduced budget. And so, uh, we will now have, uh, some fire, full-time fire staff in Villanow and also on the south end of LaFett. And so, that will bring us up from, uh, four full-time stations to six. Last year, there was three total. We'll now have six total and we'll have 24/7 staff at those stations to give us better response time. Okay, uh, I won't read every one of these, but another one that, uh, they've done a great job on is the Mountain Cove Farms, the nights are booking, total nights booked. There was, uh, 41 in August, which was a great month. We've got, uh, a lot of visitors from the storm from, uh, Florida and also I think they had full bookings for the, uh, Iron Man events. And so, we had a lot of people stayed with us over that time period.
Shannon?
Yes?
What, what is, I mean, the numbers are deceiving because it's not telling us what percentage of full we're having here. I mean, what, what's the capacity? You got what, four cabins?
What, what we there's, uh, is there seven cabins? Six cabins? Six, six or seven cabins?
And then, are you counting the, the cabins slots in this?
No.
You're only counting cabins?
Just the cabins. So, if you look in all of 2016, like.
Well, I, I understand, I understand that number, but I, I was just concerned about what, what percentage of capacity we are at.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a good point. We haven't technically been measuring it that way. We're just looking at.
Well, that, that, that tells us whether or not this is economically feasible for us to continue, to do.
Yeah, uh, it's not.
I, I figured it wasn't, but anyway, I mean, you, you know what I'm saying.
Right, yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, one thing that we added, uh, last month with the planning was the, uh, number of permits being pulled by single-family home construction. Uh, July, there was nine, August was 13th, so we've had 87 for the year. So, I know we don't have any 2016 data yet, but Christie, you think we're up, down, flat?
Oh, definitely.
Definitely up on new family home construction in Walker County, where we've already issued 87 new permits for 87 new houses to be built in Walker County this year. Uh, then we have the public relations information there. So, those are just things I wanna bring to highlight. This also will be available on the website, but we do produce this each and every month to give everybody an update of how things are going. Okay, that's going to adjourn our regular scheduled commissioners' meeting. We'll close that out and then we'll open the floor, anything anybody wants to talk about pertaining to county business. This is your meeting. Yes, sir?
I, I want, uh, someone here that could answer this question for me. In our animal control, uh, do we have any means to do, uh, home visitations for people that are applying to adopt an animal from outside our county, like from the Midwest or whatever? They require, they require a person to come to the person that is wanting to adopt the, the animal, which is a dog, um, and check a lot of specifications that the rescue places, uh, have for you to be able to rescue that individual dog. And I'm in the process of, my, my dog died in August there. I'm in the process of rescuing another Shiba New in, um, out in Illinois and Illinois always, and I've got three locations that possible that I can adopt one from that, one being from Alabama. And, uh, I, if we do have something that they can do that, they're having trouble like in Missouri, finding someone locally that would do that. And I don't know whether our, uh, rescue place that we have does that or not. I would like to, to know so I can give them their number in case you're, I, I'm sure they must pay you to do it. I'm sure they don't require you to do it for nothing, but they've got a bid at the home to make sure that you have the proper fencing, you have what should be inside the house to really make matters, but, uh, there's all kinds of things they have, you have to check, like if you have other animals, small children in your home and, and all that, which we don't pay. It's just minimal like. Like I said, my dog, my, my dog that I had for 13 years died with a brain tumor, so we're in the process of trying to get another one and would like to rescue one instead of purchasing one, you know, a puppy because I'm 80, I'll be 81 next year, next month, and, uh, a little puppy's a little harder to deal with than, than, uh, one that's three or four years old and that's already trained. That way, I don't have to have the personal trainer that I, I had to train the one that I had as, as a puppy.
Allison, any thoughts on that?
Oh, I have a lot of thoughts on that, but I didn't know since it would have to be him, you know, that, that he would answer it. But if your question is with the rescues, they're requiring someone in authority to come by and do a home visit, do you?
That, that's, that's very common.
It's just more like trying to adopt a child.
It, it's worse. It's really worse with the, with the rescues. They, they are pretty tough. But I would ask the rescue what entity needs to come and do the home inspection that they would respect the answer. So, either animal control, if that's what they would prefer, then get them to contact, um, the animal control office and then they can make arrangements to have the officer come out and, you know, check the environment. So, if that's what they're looking for, I can make sure that you get the phone number, okay?
Yeah, I gave them the, uh, Black McCamey and some Pauls, a Love or whatever. There's three or four different ones in Hamilton County. I gave them their address and, and telephone number, but I didn't know whether that our county would do that or not.
Well, that's why I say if, if you can get them to contact the animal control, then we can find out what they do require, what they're looking for. Because sometimes there are forms that, that animal control would fill out showing what needed to be inspected and did it meet the specifications.
I've got the adoption list, it's about this long.
Is that all? Is that it?
Yeah, it's about five pages.
Okay, we'll get with Allison after the meeting. Let her give you that phone number, we can write that down and we'll see if we can help you out with that. All right, who's next? Anybody have anything else? All right. This is your meeting. If you got something you wanna ask. Okay, well, I really do appreciate each and every one of you coming out tonight and taking part in your local government. I hope you will come back and, uh, participate and stay involved and stay engaged and, uh, we'll, uh, get a picture here for the domestic violence awareness and we hope all of y'all have a safe travel home. Okay, that'll be all. Thank you.